We will start with the contingent, which includes the approval of the agenda in April twenty, sorry, April eighteen, twenty twenty four minutes. Is there a motion to approve the contingent? The first and the second meeting discussion. Seeing all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair has had a motion carried. Move down into public comments. Like to sit at the podium and provide a public comment?
Yeah.
Wonderful. Please do.
Up here?
Yes, sir. Absolutely solid. This is a fifteen minute time period for citizens to appear and express their views before the library board. There's a limit of three minutes per speaker. So you have three minutes. You'd like to introduce yourself or let me hear from you.
Well, I'm having problems with the library. I talked to librarian and he was cordial with me the first time, but then the next time he changed things around. And I was having problems with people interrupting while I'm trying to be on the computer. And I asked one of the clerks to quieten down or do something. Mostly the answer is, uh, nothing we can do. So I even talked to the supervisor. And she said, you're able to talk as long as it's not too loud. And they can talk on the phone and look at the computer. Well, a lot of that stuff doesn't work. You know, even though things change, there's other people in the room that don't want to hear all that. And usually when I see them talking on the phone, they're not even looking at the computer. it's more like a social club telling you the truth. And I don't know how people can do a whole lot, which I'm here about every day and I know what goes on. And I worked for the school district as a substitute. I have a degree in law enforcement. And I have enough credits that I can do other things. some of the things I see, I see people sleeping. Sometimes they'll wake them up and tell them, you know, they can't do that. But other times they just let them sleep. No bother. It's just easy for you to do. And another one, they're not supposed to be eating food. I went to them and told them somebody was eating food crunching behind me. I went and told them, did they do anything? No, they didn't do anything. They sit right there after this. And I've heard them even from businesses, talking business over the phone and not even doing anything to the computer. Talking to their friends. I don't think that's part of the library really. More of a social club. But anyway, it does bother when everybody's chattering behind me, in front of me. They're even trying to, uh, tease because they know they're not supposed to do it. But it happens. And then you go and tap somebody, oh, there's nothing I can do. Well, I had a lot of study halls and people had to, you know, be quiet so people could stay. And I taught math and B.E. And this library is just getting out of hand. I've let this go probably for a month. And I thought, well, something's got to be done. I'm not getting a lot of things done. I'm getting bothered. But do they care? They don't say a word. Well, I even asked one about this one guy. He, uh, he was doing his normal thing, acting crazy and talking loud. And one of the girls was going to go say something to him. Well, Alice, the supervisor, said, no, come in here. So she backed up, went back into that crowd. And nothing was done. But see, there are behind me about two or three ghosts. So they're not hearing all this. I'm right next to them, behind you, in front of you. And I don't know how they think you're going to get things done. I talked to Mr. Meyer and he said things change. Well, they may change, but people likes to, you know, enjoy their computer and not be interrupted and people even scream. Did they do anything? No.
I didn't sort of time where they're served. I think it probably is about three minutes there. My last name? Mark Hubert. Mr. Hubert. So one, there's no formal response that's given by the board to individuals that come and speak for the board. Obviously, if there's any kind of breach of policy or something of that nature, obviously, we'll take that into consideration to make the appropriate response. But I just want to just clarify, the issue at hand is the even dispersment or, sorry, I should say enforcement of the library policies that relates to, you know, volume while using the computers and specifically eating. On the premises, is that the issue that I'm getting?
Right.
Absolutely. Wonderful. Well, I appreciate you because I'm going to give your comment today and we will have the appropriate conversation and response to that. And hopefully that issue will not, you know, continue forward for you. And hopefully you're able to continue to use the library to the fullest degree as you can. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
It's okay, Piper.
Yes, public body, absolutely. Your morning mistake. All right. Ryan, I have to say, Ryan, I have to admit, I should actually do a timer. We haven't asked you to walk. I didn't actually have to walk. Uh, but you know, I'm on the county board and we definitely have folks that come there. So I should, I should have remembered. All right, wonderful. So we will move down and bring it to communications, brother couple from here. And then we will now go into our division reports. So I I need to leave first, but I feel like Matt hasn't been here in such a long time. I feel like we should, we should hear Matt. Let's tell you, man, I'm first.
Okay. Well, since the first of the year, uh, or since I was at the last meeting. Chris and I have replaced fifteen staff computers and twelve patron computers with Windows eleven. Computers, ten is soon to like to be in their lives. We've got to start that. Um, we upgraded twenty-four patron computers to Windows eleven. And of the ones that weren't usable, well, they're usable, but we offered them to staff. Five staff members took us up on that. And we also sent twenty-nine pieces of various hardware to recite, like, which was a big haul this time. And then City Blue was here April twenty-ninth to install nine new printers. And they're working great. Not too many complaints. Then Watts, all of their computers are sitting down in the computer room. They're going to pick them up hopefully within the next couple of weeks. Couple of things they're waiting for. But they're at least in company. And then today, Business Solutions. They started working on a server that we have ready for them. And they will be here July tenth and eleventh for installation and training.
Matt says there weren't too many complaints, but he was kept very, very busy for the first couple of days. Got everything resolved. And I can tell you that staff really likes the new stuff. Yeah. There's always, there's always bumps in the road when you install a new core.
Like this is typically for staff equipment only, plus the end of the program again, basically.
There's one computer that the patrons print through.
It's eight point five. Obviously, it's very common to use it. Very nice. Anything else?
That's all.
You'll have one coming.
Oh, they saw it too long.
Oh, no, I don't know. I don't know. Wonderful, wonderful, wonderful. If I move on down the line here.
Okay. So this is what the new printer looks like. It's the color. And so we could, we all have color. And so since it's, I guess, what it's inkjet now? Instead of laser.
It's high, high.
So it's more sustainable.
So it'll work even better.
No heat. So I'm going to show you a couple of things. So we've been working on stack maps. Stack maps maps the actual physical location. So like if you're, it's not very big, but this, this is what it looks like. You're looking at items, a little button. You click map it and then it pops up. Pops up to that and then there's a little red arrow. So I have a staff person who's just been really diligent, Robert Davis. It is. It tells you what board it's on and exactly where it is on. Oh, yeah, there you go. I hooked in it. This one was called the alternatives and I'll, I didn't think of that.
I'm going to play one for a full scale.
Yeah, that's right. I don't know if you can get a leaf up there.
Since we should check off my risk, I don't know.
Yeah. The only thing that I don't like about it, so if you click available. So wait a second.
Wait a minute.
And then it pops up. So there's a little delay there and I wish it wasn't, but it gets extremely accurate. So a huge shout out to Robert Davis because he, he was tenacious about getting every last section. We had to clean up in the database too to make it work. So we're turning our attention to children's now.
Good luck. I know he's, I know he's watching this right now, so.
And then this one, I don't know. I don't know if you can bring a leaf up there, but so this is a picture of what it looks like when we're at the computer studying up a new picture. In Polaris. This is what it looks like in the leaf interface. Just boxes that you tap through. And so this is something we're changing to. We're no longer doing the fill up cards. And we're going to work with IHLS to streamline. So everybody can just go online and they're not, they can do it on the phone. You know, don't have to have a card, can have a card, but just make it easier. You've got a smartphone and you don't want to carry a card around, you don't have to. So. Our tech stuff today. And then if anybody's interested, Library Two Point O's are in another three-part AI in libraries. I can, you can understand anybody. This is the survey. I mean, all the topics you can think of. And it's, the presenters are amazing.
I have mine on my phone too, shared. It's awesome.
Okay. I have a small card. I have a very, very large card.
Yeah. I lost my big card about, I don't know, fifteen years ago.
You can even use this. You can even use this app to check out materials without going to even a self-check machine, let alone.
It is fun. Yeah.
I know. It's pretty simple.
I've already been doing this for over a year.
But that's incredibly helpful. I've been obviously more than ever since I was so much of a usual, a veteran schooler here. And I'm more than capable of doing it, but I have failed to ever understand the reading system. So having it pop up on the little screen for me, that is so great.
LC is worse.
How, one more time?
LC is worse.
I actually spent, I actually come down and spend a couple of days with you and she's a little bit more.
We're probably going to do more science, like gardening is here and, you know, I mean, why not?
They taught us as children, they taught us as children, but that's not one thing that I would change my personal.
It's really just numerical and mathematical order.
And that's what I mean. I'm sure it's not that complicated, but.
But it's just, you know, associating those numbers with the topics that, you know, sometimes takes a while, but it's the same thing.
Did you hear every day seven forty-one point five is comics? You can't help it.
LC, I don't know about that. I just look it up from the system itself.
Nine seven eight point three five eight is, or nine seven seven point three five eight. They got history.
I'm going to tell the story, but we'll send it here. I saw you did some specific. One of them, please.
Um, so I think I mentioned the last night that we were having a visit from the State Archives. And we did. They were very pleased with the project. Uh, they were here to see the Ishraad project that we're working on the railroad maps. Uh, and they, we had to give them a bit of a presentation on what we're doing. Kind of show them around what we're working with, what equipment they bought or helped buy, I should say. Uh, and then they were given a tour of the archives. Uh, it was the David Johns, the director of the State Archives, um, and his deputy director, Kathy Popovich. Uh, and they're so pleased with what we're doing. They have invited us to apply for a disrupt grant feature. So, um, yeah, they were, I think the words, Rick, were, uh, this is, this is probably the best one we've seen so far.
Yeah, I said, trust me, trust is not, not all these visits are.
Yeah.
This is nice to have one that we're really happy with, so.
Jack, what's in here?
That's awesome.
Yeah. So, yeah, uh, so we're, we're very proud of, of what we've accomplished. Uh, and should be finished with said, uh, project June thirtieth. Fingers crossed. There's a few things we asked you that we kind of forgot about that we put in the brand until they were here. Oops. So hopefully we won't need an extension. I don't think they're going to mind because they're not giving us any more money. The money is spent.
Yes.
Uh, so if we have to get an extra month, they're probably going to be like, that's fine. Make, make pretty pictures. Yeah. So.
Yeah. We're, we're.
No, we're doing really well. Yeah. No, we've, we've got some really good kudos from, from the State Archives of all places. That's awesome.
Well, I like that most people on Instagram never know that.
They're on Facebook as well and they are going up on Twitter. Uh, that's all Sherry. That's all, one of my part timers. Uh, she's taken on Facebook and just run with it. And she's very interested in all the photos we have. Yeah. So, and she likes to, to keep it down to earth and more.
It's just fun.
Lay it back in her language than I am, so, which is really helpful. She does a job.
But we need to apply for public awareness, hi video, because there's so many things here. I think we're still, we're understanding the whole, the reason. Thank you. Please, I am just kind of, yeah, but we'll go on now to our, let's see, like, that case.
Got it. Um, so the thing that I'll tell you about today is something that I consider completed in April, although we still have some things that we need to work on. But we formed a committee that's called now the Incident Report Committee. I might have talked about it before. We call it IRK lovingly. Um, our first purpose was to find a way to improve the way we do incident reports. And what has happened is we have taken our access database, which has been working fine in the past. And we have created an air table that works even better. It enables us to have authority control over patrons. So you might have somebody who does, um, the same thing over and over again. Like for instance, we had some teenagers who came on here, had some threatening behaviors, destructive behavior. They were banned for a year and they come back. And you would see that there was a report every single time that happened. And so then we have to go back and it's report number five forty-three and five forty-six and five forty-eight and five, you know, on and on. This way there is just one patron connected to all the incidents that we happen to have on them. So you no longer have to search. They're just all connected. Um, and so what we've done is we've created something that issues notifications as they're created. So let's say a patron has to be ejected from the library for a day. You go in, you acknowledge this has happened, then everybody in the library is notified. So if that person comes back, we know you've been asked to leave the day, you can come back tomorrow. Division has had the ability to eject somebody for a full week. We'll be able to go into this new database and click that we've ejected this person for the week. It will notify everybody. So if that person comes in, everybody will be able to see who that is. It also involves pictures and you can see it from your phone. So sometimes it's hard because not everybody is aware of what the problem is. You know, those teenagers, it took me three weeks before I moved to the teenagers' ward before I deal with them myself. And it helps when everybody is on the same page. So we're very excited to use it. My department has been using air tables for about two years now. So I think it'll be pretty easy for us to flip the switch and move over. Luckily on this committee, it's two of Carol's clerks, Noah and Robert, who do the stack acts, have been involved very heavily. And it's been nice to put together a committee that involves front-facing staff from multiple divisions because we all bring something different to the table. And we're all very happy. We've been meeting in the computer lab to try to break it. And we're very happy with it and we're hoping to roll it out this coming week. We just finished by taking the different kinds of incidents we have and connecting them to an expected ban. So that we're no longer thinking, oh, does this deserve this ban? What have we done in the past? That we can say, oh, this is violent behavior. We expect a one-year ban. Um, this is verbal abuse, costs only a one month. We still have the ability to do case by case and Rick has the final say, but we don't have to guess so much. Um, the last thing that we need to do, we still have to brainstorm best practices for unknown patrons. Because if you have a database full of unknowns, it's hard to find the right one. And so we're going to find a way to, you know, pinpoint individual people and separate them. Best practices for writing incident reports. We need some work on that. And then we're going to end with recommendations to the board on libraries guidelines, like how we handle people sleeping at the library, you know, and food. And we're also going to provide training via Ryan Dowd on the correct way to use these things.
And those, and those, uh, recommended bands is something we'll talk to you guys about to the future. Something that is in line with what you want as the policy majors of this, of this organization. So, but it's, for years, it's been, I've been kind of expected to, with the wisdom of Solomon, beside everything. Another thing we're, we're taking a look at is, uh, when the report comes to me, it being blonde, in other words, I don't have identifying information. I don't know who it is or, or a race gender, that kind of thing. There will be in the body, sometimes there will be cues, but, you know, just to prevent any, you know, unintentional bias and to, you know, make sure that we're talking about. The decision is based on the behavior.
Do we take photos of the district library cards of the YMCA?
We can. And it's something that we discussed years ago.
I'm in favor and I would love to offer it. It helps the patron too.
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be on the card, but on account, you know, on our side, I, I, yeah. Hard to, it's hard to make anybody do that, you know, but, uh, without, without policy change, of course. But, um, we do, we talk about this a lot. We all, we, by law, we have to keep that information confidential. So, uh, which we'll be talking about. We're here to distribute my, my chat. That all? All right. You guys can, you're welcome to stay or.
You don't leave me for anything. I'm home right.
Make sure. It's a Friday Thursday night. It was a hot day.
Bye. Thank you.
Given the fact that we have a lot of business to take, you know, a lot has a hard stop. I'll keep it really brief. I'm just going to, I'm just going to point this out to you. So you're going to see a huge, what looks to be a hu, it is, a huge increase in children's circulation for April. That is a big increase. That's sixty-four percent.
You like that?
I don't want us to get too excited because what we're looking at is we're comparing to April of twenty twenty-three, which was abysmal. It was a, it was a really huge dip in circulation. This is just getting back to normal. Twenty twenty-three April was, was one of the, so when you see this, it is good. It's, those are real numbers. If they're just a little misleading because April last year was not good for children, for little boys. So happy to answer any other questions about, about my report, written reports or my statistical reports. But, you know, I don't, I, I, I want to make sure we get to the resolution at least before a lot has to go. Because my understanding is once we lose quorum, we have to, we have to stop.
Well, we can talk about this later.
So we will move down into our course committee's first personal policy publication. Of course, both our presidents, unfortunately, they're not doing it here, so we're going to make quick work of this. First be the library building use policy as an action item. Hopefully you have time to review it. The building use policy.
And.
Yes.
And I don't think that's any bad.
No recommended changes?
I don't think it is.
So you think this is not the changed one?
It is not. It is not. So I would recommend table on this till next month. We know what the committee wants to do, but I did not provide you with the full.
And what about the other one, the library?
The other one is, what is, the other one we can, we can move on.
Yeah, that would just matter.
It's that statute. It's, it's, it's the law, so. We, there's no recommended change to that and I apologize for the.
So I made a motion to table the library buildings use policy.
So first, second. So first, second, in the session. Seeing all in favor, state products, aye.
Aye.
Do you, uh, chair eyes have a motion to table?
And I made a motion to accept the library records confidentiality policy.
First or second?
Policy.
Second. All, in the discussion, seeing all in favor, state products, aye.
Aye.
I in favor. Eyes have one here. DEI can be minutes since our last meeting, obviously, it's a complex situation. Oh, is it? You should do that.
There was a meeting yesterday, but I think.
So my thing is accurate?
What, what, what we talked about last, which was just the goals that we developed, is that, I think, what we?
Right.
Yeah. Last, uh, when we talked to the DDTR.
I have the listening now.
I think, uh, there wasn't a whole lot new to report from.
So June, look, from the time that Carol came and gave us the whole.
Do you want it? Because our next meeting would have been on June eight and we're closed. So we originally were going to cancel the June meeting, but now I think we're switching gears and going to the twentieth so we can get started on the smart goal.
Huh. So weird. But this one, it was. Mike, you kind of obviously, that reminds me that it's not correct, but yesterday was actually correct. When I saw it, I was like, yeah, it's not today. It's actually today.
So would you be interested in the, I believe there's eight smart goals that we've set?
Are we going to?
Um, and I can just give you a very simple description as opposed to the full. So one is standardizing the hiring policy. One of them is alternatives to college degrees. One of them is job descriptions. Inclusive environment, seeing by staff. Increased DEI collection. LGBT QIA plus safe space. Culture diverse programs and community partners. And the last one is community advisory. Representation from at least five underrepresented workers.
I'm very much, very much on favor of that. And I can keep that in my conversations with community members and without including other board members, which I'll speak to more later.
Yes. Don't.
So again, twenty eighth, it's the, it's the, so.
Twelve o'clock in the state league.
Make a strong point of change in the calendar. Um, we'll be down now. We'll move, it's no other discussion. Uh, the VBR will go to Friday's property committee, which is the book of what we have to discuss. So capital needs discussion.
Wasn't a part, it wasn't a part of our discussion, but I, I do want to let you know we've got, we had some serious problems with the roof. Uh, so they didn't seal it properly and, uh, we didn't get much in the library proper, but over there on that side, uh, the workforces and it was bad. And project pink world was really bad. So, uh, the, the roofers are on the hook for all the cost. And again, I don't, no really, there was no real, you know, substantive damage in the library property. We got a little bit of water that I taken in, but nothing was.
Nothing was harmed, actually.
Yeah. So then we really, we were careful about the history, nothing came in there. So, but, but there, pardon.
It's the lumps of data.
So there was, but there was some, there was definitely some damage on that side and the, the roofers are on the hook for it. And City, City responded very quickly and took care of things. They got served early and they're right away to. in there right away, uh, to keep it from getting any worse, and some pumps up there and all kinds of things, so.
Yeah, I heard that. The city may be go, the smart team, the management strategy, I don't know how it goes, but I hope that that gets it right. Beautiful, all right, um, we'll keep it on moving at switching forward, sorry, April two coming forward, check registry, if they do report.
I think a motion for the finance and property committee to accept the track registry as we do review it during our meeting.
Can I ask you anything first? Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Voiceless, so, any discussion? Seeing none.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four ayes, zero nays. Uh, we move down to the twenty twenty-four budget actuals discussion.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're, we're in good shape relatively, I mean, uh, our, our cash on hand as of May first was one million, six hundred forty-six thousand dollars, and not in nine dollars. Uh, as far as the projection goes, uh, expense wise, we're, we're in good shape. Uh, we're not, I mean, we're spending less than projected, although I do have some big, some big expenses coming up. The revenue side is what I'm concerned about. Uh, D P R T, which is personal property replacement tax, we're on pace to, uh, collect two hundred and thirty-one thousand less than budgeted. So I'm gonna keep a close eye on that, I'm gonna keep a close eye on the budget discussions in Springfield, because they're a different fiscal year than this, so it could be that this rebounds, if they, if the, if the general secretary decides to, uh, fund D P R T better again, uh, in, in the coming fiscal year, we could rebound through the rest of our fiscal year. So their fiscal year starts July one, ours goes through December thirty-one. Uh, it could get worse though, you know, they could decide to cut it more, so we keep a very close eye on it. Uh, expense side, we're really confident. And, and that's what we can control, right? We can't control the revenue side.
And yeah, I, I, obviously, I have to keep my ears to the ground socially, because the state government, though I can get all the words I, I would.
Well, I didn't find out about P P R T until last year, until January, when the budget, when we wanted to stay, add the budget, that's when I, I heard, I mean, I, I didn't hear any talk of it.
So obviously, we go to other, you know, like library systems, you should be, people remember about that at all? Or other people, you know, about that, obviously.
About P P R T? Uh, not much, I haven't heard, and, and again, we usually, we usually collect more than the budget. This is the second time, I think, in, in ten years that we've had a short fall. And, and again, we don't have a short fall yet, it's just looking like it will.
All right, well, if we, uh, no other comments, I will move down, um, into the resolution to accept front-bid proposal and ultimate action item. Was this a mandate correct out of our committee?
Uh, well, no, okay, there was a, it was something, something was, something was a table, and I'll get to that. Uh, I, I, I'd like to quickly, just because you haven't seen it, because I didn't get it till three o'clock, uh, I'd just like to quickly read the, the resolution to you with your permission. Uh, whereas if, uh, you guys, the board trustees, uh, desire to coordinate the purchase and installation of various furniture at the library, whereas you've engaged in, you've engaged product architecture and design to facilitate the bidding process and evaluate the best responsive bidder, whereas product architecture and design record a recommendation to award, which you did receive with your package, uh, May thirteen, twenty twenty-four, the cap shared to forehead exhibit A. Whereas the trustees have reviewed the recommendation to award dated May thirteen, twenty twenty-four and agree with its findings. Whereas the trustees desire to accept a certain base bid proposal and alternative proposals for the purchase and installation of furniture by Thomas Interiors. Uh, whereas, uh, that seems to be, uh, whereas the trustees desire to accept a certain base bid proposal and alternative proposals for a library, uh, custom, purchase and installation of custom millwork furniture from Library Furniture International at the library, which are attached as exhibit C. Whereas the life of trustees desire to accept a certain base bid proposal and alternative base bid proposals for the purchase and installation of furniture by Agadi at the library, which were exhibit G. Uh, whereas, by the way, I wrote my abuse because I was nervous that we weren't gonna get one, find us much shorter. Uh, the trustees desire to accept a certain base bid proposal of purchase and installation of furniture in glass wall by K I Furniture at the library, exhibit F. Whereas trustees desire to accept a certain base bid proposal for purchase and installation of seating by B S Furniture at the library, exhibit F. That's exhibit one, exhibit E, excuse me. Whereas the trustees desire to accept a certain base bid proposal and alternative proposals for purchase and installation invited by Everbright at the library, which are here to, as exhibit G. Be it resolved by the trustees that various proposals attached as exhibit A through G are hereby accepted. Uh, then we put in the date, uh, and, and record the ayes, nays, and absences, secretary and president sign, alter, the alternative bids. My recommendation is that we do accept the, uh, the one that, for the friends area, they, they voted last week to, uh, kick in ten thousand dollars for exhibit. Uh, and I, after much discussion with Sam, my recommendation for the alternative bid for the hanging severance quiet study room is to keep it a quiet study room and keep that alternative in.
Really?
Yeah.
As opposed to like pods in the back of the library?
Well, we can still do that, but that's not part of this. Yeah, that's a, that's a down the road.
But you didn't want it to be another meeting room?
Not at this time, because it's, we, although we do have other meeting rooms, you guys did change your meeting room policy, hopefully that will help our bottleneck on, on, uh, meeting room use, um, and it's the only quiet study space that we have right now. So, um, down the road, I could see, I, I would, I think all staff agrees that we would like to see some private study rooms, whether they're in the form of the pods, or, you know, per, or permanent, uh, structures. Uh, I think that that's doable, I think it's something that, you know, we can get the foundation behind to, to conduct a, uh, a capital campaign for. But our recommendation at that, at this time is to do what we planned all along, which is to keep it as a, a study, a quiet study room, just make it a better one, so it's more invited, and accept that, uh, alternative, alternative bid. Of course, the decision is up to the board.
Has everybody been down there? We're all under down there last week. Did you go around?
I know, it's nice. It's nice to take a little round.
Concerns were, concerns were primarily about sound, and that would be a meeting room right by where the, where the computers are, and could be, you know, pretty disturbing to people using the computers. Also, the fact that there is no other quiet study space.
Yeah, we got it. I wish we could put the pods.
It's also time as we have.
I wish we could put the pods in there.
And it's, it's.
You don't want, you don't want.
And we can also, we can also look and see where we land after, you know, this project, and see what kind of money we have left over. We do have a thirty thousand dollar contingency, so, but I think, I think, you know, pods or permanent quiet study rooms, you know, cost a lot more than thirty thousand.
Yeah.
I know. You weren't here, we were looking at this one pod, and it was like, I don't know, like eight thousand dollars, but the shipping was eighty-nine thousand dollars. So we were like.
We love this, right.
Yeah, it was crazy, so we were just like, oh. Eighty-nine thousand dollar shipping.
So anyway, our, uh, you know, Tiffany's, Tiffany's recommendation, you guys have seen, I am in agreement, and our staff is in agreement with those recommendations. Uh, it still comes in under our total budget of one million, two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
I guess for me, if we are not gonna sound, if that really makes sense, we keep a quiet study room now.
My point was having it be applicable.
I would love to have.
Trying to.
That's a, that's a, that's a policy issue, we could, and once we got, said we did discuss that, and it was, yeah, I think it's possible.
Okay, let's go.
Um, it's, it's, yeah, it's a voiceless.
Do you have to go?
Yeah. Is that, can I say, I would like to motion to approve.
It's a first and a, and a second.
All second.
There's a first and a second, uh, any discussion, further discussion? To record the.
So we are gonna.
The votes.
And voice, and so.
Yeah. Ah, yes. Yes.
Yes.
Two ayes, no nays, two absences.
Four ayes, right? Two, I thought.
Two nays. Uh, two, two, no, zero nays and two absences.
Okay, I was like, do you need, I'm like, oh, four of us, I guess.
I'm a point seven percent, there's a point five, two point fives, and I'm at ten, because this is, this is here. So you want one?
Oh, yes.
I'm very, I like a very fine one.
I was gonna say.
I'm used to there, but I don't use to write that much anymore.
I can't sign contracts until I find out about the grant.
So. Or you mean, the.
Yeah, we said we were gonna allow it to.
Okay, we're gonna move down now for the sake of Alana and David's meetings. Foundation, there's nobody, we're down in Friendsville Library, May nineteenth, they gave approval of our request.
And they, and they approved ten thousand.
It's a large first, it went towards the. Anything else? All right, we'll move down now to Illinois Park, in libraries, it's.
Well, let's just skip, let's allow it to leave and then go back to the.
Wait, it actually, you have to, you have to.
And we have a national, I mean, actually, but, um, open trust DC, I, it's been a busy month for me, I did go to a cultural fair, and I did reach out to the organization, um, they have not gotten.
My friend did tell me to apply, but he hasn't heard anything, so I don't know.
Okay, great, wonderful, I know. We'll talk about it. Uh, to sale of library furniture, yes, they actually, they actually.
Uh, what I'm looking for is, is a, is a, is a motion to move forward with Ed Walker or something else, uh, and, and it does not have to be done this month. We're looking at September for the new furniture, so if you guys wanna further discuss it, I'm comfortable with it.
I would be.
You're our expert.
And our contact in the.
I don't, I don't love the fact that it's so expensive, but I, I mean, I don't, I, I admit, this has been a very busy spring term.
If you want, if you want another month, I'm okay with it, I don't have.
That would be great, that's my fun.
All right, my motion's tabled, first, this is first and second, any debate, seeing none, um, all in favor, table and signify, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, motion is tabled. Uh, no other discussion, no other business, most true. Some of those are expensive.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, 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 motion carries, we are adjourned at five twenty.